Good evening. This annual organizational meeting of December 9th, 2019, of the Dubuque Community School District Board of Education is called to order. Our mission is to develop world-class learners and citizens of character in a safe and inclusive learning community. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barton.
Here.
Ms. Bradley.
Here.
Mr. Donahue.
Here.
Mr. Prohaska.
Here.
Ms. Ryan.
Here.
Mr. Sancy.
Here.
Ms. Whitman.
Here. And we have students from Table Mound here who can come forward, introduce yourselves, and lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
My name's Allison. Allison Faust.
My name is Max.
Wait, what? I'm in third grade.
My name's Willa Faust, and I'm in third grade.
My name is Owenamah, and I'm in third grade.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Thank you.
Good job.
I move the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the agenda as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move the Board of Education approve the minutes of a regular meeting on November 11th and the special meeting on November 25th, 2019, as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the minutes of the regular meeting on November 11th and the special meeting on November 25th, 2019, as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. And Board salutes, Mr. Prohaska.
Yes. I have a board salute that goes out to Dubuque senior high school teachers, Dane Latham and Kristen Whedlin, and the Hempstead High School teacher, Joel Miller, for their outstanding job they did representing the district on NBC News. While in town covering the presidential election, the NBC team came across an article in the Telegraph Herald about how teachers were talking about the impeachment in the classroom. This ultimately led to a roundtable with the teachers and NBC correspondent, Dasha Burns, on how educators teach complicated topics in divisive political times. The interview with these teachers reinforced the extremely high caliber professionals we are so fortunate to have in our district. They displayed clear content expertise and a commitment to teaching the political process in a way that allows students to critically explore issues and the historical context behind them. Kudos to these teachers for representing our district so well and our community on the national stage. So, thank you very much, teachers.
Thank you. Ms. Whitman.
I have a board salute. This is a third grade student from Carver Elementary School, Eleanor Johnston. She had a great idea. She wanted to, she sent a letter to the city of Asbury saying that to host a community tree lighting in Asbury Park. The city loved the idea, planted a new tree to light, and this past Friday Eleanor helped light the tree with Santa. A community saw her idea come to life with a very large crowd attended the community spirit. She was joined by classmates from Carver Elementary School, and they sang Christmas carols at the event. In our district, we say that we strive to create citizens of character, and Eleanor is a shining example of this goal. Congratulations to Eleanor on creating a new community tradition in Asbury and for bringing people together for positivity and joy.
Okay. Thank you. Any others? Okay. Thank you. I move the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education suspend the rules of order and go into open forum. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Any person wishing to address the board can come forward at this time.
I move the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education reinstate the rules of order and return to regular session. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. I move the Board of Education approve those items listed on the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the items listed in the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed?
Yes, I'd like to remove the personnel report from the consent agenda.
Okay, we'll remove the personnel report. All in favor of all other items on the consent agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. And Mr. Reingans, our personnel report.
Sure, just one thing from the personnel report. We're really excited to name the, our new director of behavior and learning supports, Mimi Holesinger. Mimi's here with us tonight. A little background on Mimi, she currently works at Audubon Elementary School as the connection liaison, and so our great fortune, the only thing we struggled with was pulling her away from Audubon where she's done such an awesome job connecting with families and with students. Mimi has worked for LORIS as well as University of Wisconsin-Plattville where she supervised student teachers doing their clinicals. She was also an assistant principal at Belvedere Junior High School in Belvedere, Illinois, was a high school teacher also in Belvedere and Muscatine High School, and a middle school teacher in River Bend School District in Illinois. So, one of the great things about Mimi is she brings from kindergarten through 12th grade in experience in working with students. She's a lifelong learner. We kind of challenged her that with this position, there's a lot to learn because it changes every day. She has a bachelor's degree from Iowa State University, a master's degree from Northern Illinois, and, oh, rhetorical commentary, and then finally, a specialist degree from the University of Iowa. So, she's been well-educated and is a perfect fit for this position. We're very excited to bring Mimi to the forum, and she'll do a great job with behavior learning supports and also with social-emotional learning as we see growing needs there. So, happy to have me to be on board.
Great. Thank you. Welcome.
I move to reinstate the personnel report as submitted.
Okay, it is, oh, sorry, I need a second.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the personnel report as submitted. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Mr. Donahue, our facilities report.
A couple of things. The committee met, reviewed our 10-year facility plan with the passing of the one-cent sales tax, the extension of that, and our community purpose statement. It's time to get back to work on that and just kind of see what's next. So, the board will be doing a work session in the future to kind of identify what those priorities are and start to figure out what those might run and what processes we might follow, continuing the good processes that we followed to this point. Additionally, we looked at a number of things. Pool replacement, that pool project is on track. We're very close to having all, most of the parking spots returned. We're very close, we're within maybe 18 parking spots, if I remember.
We've got a few spots back, starting tomorrow.
Yep, so that's always, that's always good news. And then there are seven items that require our action. The first is to receive and approve the comprehensive annual financial report. So, maybe I'll make that motion, we'll get a second, and then Kevin, you can address the board. But I move that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2019 comprehensive annual financial report.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and approve the June 30th, 2019 comprehensive annual financial report. Discussion, Mr. Kelleher.
Good evening, Bar members and Superintendent Reingans. Thank you for this opportunity. Just want to talk a little bit about the comprehensive annual financial report. It is broken down into four main sections. There's an introductory section, the financial section, a statistical section, as well as the compliance section. So, I'll talk briefly about each of those pieces and what's in those. In the introductory section, it explains what the document is. It's about 150 pages long, and there's a brief explanation of what all, what everything is included in this document. It provides some district information, and it also includes a certificate of financial reporting from last year. So, we will use this document and apply for it again for the 2019 year. In the financial section, it includes a report from the auditor, the independent auditor's report. This report said we had an unmodified or clean opinion, which is the best opinion we can receive from the auditor. It means our financial statements are fairly presented. So, they reviewed all of our documents and issued that opinion. It also includes the management's discussion and analysis, and I think that's important for the community to read when this is posted on our website. It talks about individual fund analysis, changes in the year, as well as district-wide analysis. So, all of that is included in there, and it's in a written format. It's not just numbers, so it helps explain what the numbers mean. Finally, the second, or the next section is the statistical section, and that includes 10 years of data, both on finance and other important district information, such as enrollment, property tax levies, property taxpayers, who those large things are, our debt level. So, there's a lot of things listed in that statistical section. And finally, there's the compliance section, and in that, the auditor's report on our internal controls, as well as our, how we did with our federal programs. And both of those received no, no statements of issuance to be worried about. There was no violations or variances that were reported. So, again, those were both good opinions that are here. And then finally, I would like to compliment my staff who work immense amount of hours to produce this document. Both Rick Till and Joan Stephan spend significant amount of their time putting this document together. And then also for the public, we will try to have this document, if you approve it tonight, available on our website, hopefully by the end of the week. Any questions on what's in the document specifically, or how it we got to this level?
I think we would be remiss to not say how grateful we are to you and your staff for the expertise, the integrity, and the high ethics.
Thank you, Nancy.
Having worked with you for a number of years, we're blessed.
We're very proud of this document and the opinions that they issue.
Kevin is widely considered one of the experts in the state, and he shakes his head when I say that, but it's true. He's the president, has been the president of Iowa Association of Business Officials, also on the International Board, teaches classes for the Iowa Association of School Board for new board members. So, we are very fortunate to know that whenever Kevin presents us with data, good or bad, based on the trends of funding, we know that they're accurate and we've spent the dollars wisely. So, Kevin, you and your staff do a fantastic job.
Thank you.
When you do post it on the website, there should be a disclosure that if you do suffer from insomnia, that might be.
This will cure it, yes, absolutely.
That go-to-the-stake stick of the summary. That would be a good thing.
Then have a ton of month's, and all quit falling asleep.
I know it. It's a good read, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
The next action item deals with the project for the forum boardroom. I move that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon General Construction, Inc., on the forum boardroom technology upgrades project in the increased amount of $3,014.07.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve change order number one to Tricon General Construction, Inc., on the forum boardroom technology upgrades project in the increased amount of $3,014.07. Is there any discussion?
I'd just point out, that's the first change order, and as you can see, most of the work is substantially complete, and we've got a fairly large contingency that's unused on that, which is, that's kind of a non, or not, it's a known element of projects that Bill Burkhardt oversees, is below budget, on time. So, thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
So, there's always another project in the works. The next one, I move that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specifications, form of contract, and estimate a total cost for the Hempstead Serving Kitchen Equipment Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as February 3rd, 2020, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education tentatively approve the plan, specification, form of contract, and estimate of total cost for the Hempstead Serving Kitchen Equipment Replacement Project, and set the date, time, and location as February 3rd, 2020, at 4:30 PM at the Dubuque Community School District, 2300 Chaney Road, Dubuque, Iowa, for a hearing thereon, and further authorize the advertisement for competitive bids. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
The next one deals with the senior roof replacement project. This was the one that was driven by some damage that we had back in April, obviously covered with the exception of a $10,000 deductible. All those costs are covered by our insurance policy. So, I move that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the senior roof replacement project and authorize payment of final project cost to Geese Roofing Company in the amount of $11,399 in accordance with requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve final acceptance of the senior roof replacement project and authorize payment of final project cost to Geese Roofing Company in the amount of $11,399 in accordance with the requirements of Iowa law and as more fully outlined in the submitted authorizing resolution. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
The next three action items actually are requests, call them, we true up requests to the school budget review committee every, every year in the, in the areas of increasing enrollment, open enrollment out, that's not in our fall of 2018 certified counts, and then our English learning, language learner program. So, we, we true up the enrollment or the participation in those, and then we can petition the state for additional spending authority. So, I'll, I'll deal with each of these separately. I move that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $407,296, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for increasing enrollment in fall of 2019.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $407,296, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education, following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for increasing enrollment in fall of 2019. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $28,291, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education, following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for open enrolled students not included in the district's previous year's certified enrollment count.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $28,291, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education, following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for open enrolled out students not included in the district's previous year's certified enrollment count. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
And then finally, I move that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the, to the school budget review committee in the amount of $108,979, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education, following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for providing an English language learner program for students who have exceeded five years of weighted funding in fall of 2019.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education authorize the district's administration to submit a request to the school budget review committee in the amount of $108,979, or as determined by the Iowa Department of Education, following DE audit review, in modified supplemental amount for providing an English language learner program for students who have exceeded five years of weighted funding in fall 2019. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Is that all from?
That's all I got.
All you got? All right. Thank you. Ed programs, Mr. Sancy.
Yes, I have one action item for the board today. I move that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request as submitted.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the physical education exemption request as submitted. Is there any discussion?
Just real briefly, this is a continuation of an exemption we've had for probably almost a decade. We asked for an exemption because instead of teaching physical education every other day, we teach it every day for a semester, which, philosophically, two reasons. One, it allows the students to take another class the semester that they're not in PE while receiving the same amount of physical education. And then secondly, probably more importantly, it also ingrains the idea that something that a student does every day for a semester is, tends to be more of a habit setter, and since a lot of our physical education classes, particularly the high school, are sort of interest-driven, we're helping to develop lifelong habits with our students. So, every day for a semester allows them to take another class, hopefully creates healthy habits.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries. Anything else, Mr. Sancy?
Nope.
All right. Thank you. That takes us to new business.
I move the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the school board election on November 5th, 2019.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education receive and file the abstract of votes for the school board election on November 5th, 2019. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education approve the district emergency operations plan. Is there any discussion?
It's the same plan that you approved earlier this year. We just want to get it on this time cycle so that it'll always be approved every 12 months at the December meeting.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, that motion carries.
I move the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 823117 at this time.
Second. Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education take no further disciplinary action related to student number 823117 at this time. Is there any discussion?
Good old 823117.
Yeah, get double seconded, so.
It's a good one.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Are you sure that's not Barton's old?
I just want that reflected in the minutes that I said something productive at this meeting. Good old 823117, I love that kid.
We all do. That motion carries. Thank you. Board member or administrative issues? Well, I guess this is part of the time where we're going to.
Roast.
Kind of, roast?
Start to roast.
Mr. Barton, for his last meeting after serving many years on the board, and it is going to be a big loss to have you here, I will be the first to say, and I know everyone can speak for themselves, but it has been my honor, my privilege to serve with you, and I think it was your encouragement to help me get to run eight years ago, and it was quite a journey that we took on eight years ago this time around. So, I appreciate fully everything that you have taught me in how to do the school board, who to listen to, and, and I will be one of those people who will always remember that I think the famous, I think we need to put it up somewhere on the wall in here, the citizens own the joint. And that is going to be the quote that forever Tom Barton will ever be, be known for, if anything, because it's just the truth. And you will be missed, but we know where to find you.
Thanks.
With all of that, so, I don't know if anybody else wants to say anything.
I agree with that. I've met Tom many years ago when I was in college, and I was just reminding Tom how we met, and you've always been just this authentic guy who truly cares about this community, and you truly care about kids. And I remember when I first mentioned that I wanted to run for school board, that was his first question, what are you going to do for kids? And I mean all kids. And Tom has always put every single kid first and as a priority on the school board. And we've not always agreed on everything, but we left the meeting knowing that we did what's best for kids. And so, I thank you for your friendship, I thank you for your leadership, and I look forward to what's next for us. So, thanks, big guy.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, I'm going to miss your passion. You know, don't ever lose that. Come to meetings, be a voice, because I, I really enjoyed being on this board with you for the last four years.
Educational meetings, right? That's where you work.
Ed programs, I think I'm busy that day. What are those, what day was that?
No, we miss, we're going to miss your passion. You're awesome, Tom.
Thanks, Lisa.
I want to say that likewise, I've known Tom since he was a teacher at Washington Middle School, and when he was a coach as well, coached at senior high school, I believe. And you've been a great board member. Your 13 years of service is really shows your dedication to the community, and as Anderson mentioned, you are definitely interested in this community. Your sign out there, Barton Knows DBQ.
I don't know where that came from.
Where the hell that came from, I don't know. But it's been a pleasure serving with you, and you've been known as a person on the board that I feel like is willing to stand up for things, stand up for what you think is proper, what is right, and you haven't been afraid to exercise your opinions on things, which is a great thing. And also, you've shown us a lot of history, history of things in our school district. You have a wealth of knowledge as far as your background and stuff, and you're going to be missed on the board, but I certainly enjoyed working with you, as we all have, and best wishes to you. Come to all the meetings as.
That lifetime pass for athletics gets me into ed programs. Yeah, I can see the ed program, there you go.
I want to say, no way.
Sorry, Barb, we still need him here.
Thank you, Jim.
I think when I, when I think of you, Tom, I think of certainly passion, but also advocacy. As long as I've known you, going back to when you started teaching at Washington and thereafter, your advocacy is for nothing less than excellence for every kid. And if you think there's a population that's being underserved or under-discussed, or where there needs to be something more done, you're in there and you don't let go of it until it's been tended to. So, I know that that advocacy goes with you, though, and that wherever you are in this community, we'll, we'll find that advocacy continuing for the kids of Dubuque. So, what a privilege. Thank you.
Thank you.
Blessings.
Oh, there's a couple of things I'm going to miss, and a couple of things I'm not going to miss. Not going to miss hearing about Barton's coaching record, because I think we heard about it, at least for the first four years, heard about it about every meeting.
It wouldn't have been better if Prohaska could have gotten some of the calls right now.
Those signs out front, I'm thinking ahead to four years when we roll off the board. I think I'm just going to get some to say, I know Barton. That's all, I mean. But Tom was, as Tammy indicated, Tom was a, was a kind of a, one of a group of us that, that ran eight years ago, and, and really, I think, all shared the same passion for kids, and Tom's always been very strong in, in process, and I think that's one of the biggest things he brought to the board itself. And then, I think, we'll all take credit for hiring the best superintendent in the world, but I believe it was also, it was also Tom that really put us on a different path, not using a consultant to hire the next superintendent, and said, we need to restore credibility and trust, not only within the district, but within the community. And I think the hard work that we did in looking at each and every applicant for that job is a, is, that just demonstrates that Tom's passion for the, for the district, and again, just doing it right. It was, we had, we had a lot of disagreements, not in that process. I don't know, I think it got, it was a coin flip, wasn't it? But there were a lot of things that we, you know, that we had very, very active discussions about, and I think at the end of the day, the sign of a, of a good cohesive board is the ability to come together recognizing all those differences of opinion and. to come together recognizing all those differences of opinion and cohesive around a common, a common good, which, and I think in our case, has always been held up to be that of kids. What's, what, you know, how do we impact kids in a positive way first? The rest of the stuff, we believe, will always be taken care of. And I think that's, you know, that focus on process and Tom's passion for kids, I think will be a hallmark and a legacy for his, his board. So thank you, Tom, for all you've done.
Thanks, Mike.
I think we have some alumni board members, like you say.
Oh, for God's sake.
I've got the clock running. Slight breach of protocol. George Davis, 120 South Grandview Avenue. I'd like to thank all of you for all the work you do on the board. I'm an attorney, and I deal with a lot of people's problems, and I wake up in the middle of the night thinking about problems. But for the bus bar at senior high occasionally, I don't wake up thinking about school board problems anymore. Kevin says the unspent balance is in good shape, and so I don't worry about the school board too much anymore. But I did want to come and thank all of you, but in particular, Tom, for, is it 13 years?
13.
13 years of service on the school board. We overlap two years on the school board. And the, the one thing that I thought, when I was thinking, driving in tonight, that I wanted to mention, you remember the first time you won a school board election? Do you remember that?
Oh, yeah.
Remember what day it was?
Yeah, yes, I do.
September 11th, 2001. We were both on the school board election that year, and yeah, that was, that was something. And I really appreciate all the work you've done and all the good things you've done for the district. I just wanted to stop by and tell you, I appreciate it. We get together, village in, a group of us, administrators, schoolteachers, you're invited.
Right.
We'd ask that you refrain for maybe six months with, that's not the way it happened when Tom Barton was on the school board. If you could just give us six months before you start in with any of that, we'd appreciate it. But other than that, thank you for your service, and good luck in all your future endeavors.
Thanks, George.
So Barb, that's two days we've got him out of the house. He's going to come here every board meeting, he's going to be in the Jordan. We're working.
Board members, Mr. Rheingans, my name is Craig Byten. I reside at 54, I had to read. I reside at 5479 Sun Valley Drive. As many of you may remember, I voluntarily, voluntarily vacated my seat on the Dubuque Community School Board just a mere 25 months ago, during which a bloodless transition of power took place. During that occasion, Mr. Barton offered a semi-poetic epigram celebrating my exit from this august body.
Oh, boy.
I am tonight here to return the favor.
Payback.
I therefore offer the file, the following elegy, avoiding the tendency to be jejun, punctilious, or sophistic. Ode to Mr. Barton. There once was a board member named Barton, whose value to our community cannot be accountant. And though his vocabulary must, might be somewhat lacking, his speeches somewhat taxing, he rarely failed to entertain his humor dry and wit or bane. His dedication never in doubt, he knew what education is about, holding all around him to live the plan, teachers, administrators, and especially Stan. Insistent that, that the strategic plan had outcomes that could be had, purposeful, measurable, avoiding senseless fad, praise he would give, well, just a tad. Upon the one cent sales tax he did count, to deliver the right amount, so that students would have the space to excel and flourish and their dreams to chase. He served three terms, if you ask him, more. Battled for fairness and truth, showing mediocrity the door. Although patience was not his gift, at times he'd get downright miffed. And when he sensed a lack of dedication, great compassion he did offer, if effort was exhaustive. Excellence in quality and delivery, real intent is what he proffered. He took seriously his role as counselor, teacher, and voice of reason. And now, as he ends his season, and perhaps for good reason, he takes with him the admiration of all. He'll be remembered for many things, perhaps more than anything his adage will ever ring. What's in his heart shows on his face, he never forgot who owns the place.
Wow.
Tom, I got you a gift. This is actually a thesaurus. But it isn't illustrated, so it has pictures.
It does. Anybody else have a poem, a song?
There's not much left for me to say, Tom.
Certainly as a superintendent, the one quality that I always appreciated and that you exemplified was, I always knew where you stood in an issue. You didn't hold back, you didn't say one thing and mean another. You always told us what you believed, whether that was at a board meeting or 10 o'clock at night. I always knew where Tom Barton stood. So I appreciate that, and that was for great benefit for the, for the community and for our students. We do have a plaque for you tonight. Dubuque Community School District, with heartfelt gratitude and honor of meritorious service, the Board of Education is pleased to recognize Tom Barton for loyal and dedicated service to the students, families, and staff of the Dubuque Community School District as a school board member from 2001 to 2006, 2011 to 2019, as, and as Board Vice President 2005 to 2006, and 2017, 2018, presented on the 19th day of December 2019. And of course, at the bottom, it says, never forget, the citizens own the joint.
No.
Did I say that? Citizens own the... Is it my turn to make a comment?
It's your turn, it's all yours, Mr. Barton.
Mike Cue Up Paradise by The Dashboard Lights.
Eight minutes, 14 seconds.
Promise, I'm not going to be like Stan, doing the strategic plan update meetings. I will keep it brief. I would just like to thank a few folks and then mention a few highlights. People who I'd like to thank, first of all, my mom. She passed in 1980, I was 13, and she taught me that self-reliance, hard work, and relentlessness were the tickets to success. Matt and Katie, our son and daughter, they endured so many school board conversations at home. They are walking, talking public officials without knowing it, but they were very tolerant. Sarah Spires, Danny Moore, and Nikki Reed from my office, they put up with a ton of school board stuff in the office, people stopping in to talk about school board, phone calls, you name it, they were my sounding board for a lot of things. John Burgart and Stan Rheingans. John was my high school librarian, Stan was a college friend, two incredible superintendents who really made board membership as easy as possible. Joanie, we've worked together since 2001. It's going to be strange not seeing your face several times a month. The executive team, truly, truly, an outstanding executive team for the district. Steve Horman and Dan McDonald. Steve was the chairman of the chamber, who actually talked me into running in 2001, and Dan McDonald worked for the chamber, and he kinda, he's with GDTC now, and kinda told me how this whole thing works. TH reporters, Mike Craftle, Madeline Firsty, Diane Held, Stacy Becker, and Ally Henga, our ally, just truly have given a lot of great coverage to what goes on with the school board. From the radio station, Tom Berryman, Cindy Coleman, and Ed Anderson. Ed, I love you, man. I, we changed the schedule for meetings, we brought back Monday Night Football for you as a reality. And I, I see one of, what's that? Yeah, yeah, keep it moving, okay, sorry. Kickoffs and kickoffs in and out. Our best customers, Paul Kurt, who is not here tonight, I see, but Tammy Dear, certainly one of our best customers, and Derek Dear is now becoming a regular as well. So good to see them. George Davis and Craig Byten, you know, one of them helped us all with our vocabulary, the other one was a proud supporter of our basketball referees. And George, you single-handedly changed the traffic flow at that Dubuque senior parking lot. I tried to get that back into its name, the George Davis Parkway or something, but everybody else thought it was a bad idea for some reason. More than anyone, I have to thank Barb, my wife. Hundreds, if not thousands of hours, this woman has spent listening to me talk about school board, without Barb watching the kids. Now, eight years ago, the kids were a lot younger, and without Barb watching the kids on Mondays, I could not have run. Literally, I married Barb on a Friday, the election was on the Tuesday, and I was doing school board a week later. I'm lucky I'm still married. My wife Barb is truly an angel, and some would say, being married to me, she has already gone through purgatory and has a free pass to heaven at some point. Now, I knew I was becoming washed up a few years back, when at a Delsel Field event, I was chatting with someone who had no idea who I was, until the person next to her said, oh, this is Barb's husband. Barb's husband, not Tom Barton, Barb's husband. Well, with this as a backdrop, understanding what I've gone through the last few years, kind of losing my, my macho ego and being known as Barb's husband now, you can imagine how I felt the last couple of months, is it's become very clear that I'm already yesterday's news when it comes to school board. Yesterday's news. And in, in exchanges that I've had over the past few months with Tammy, Mike, and Stan, I've endured being referred to as Tom Burton, Tom Bartoldi. Now, who is this again? Tom Bronkowski? It's as if I've been completely forgotten already. I've checked to see if the landline at my house has been cut, and if my cellphone service somehow got inadvertently turned off, because no one calls me anymore. I checked my school district email today, and I see that my email address already says keparks@dbqschools.org. Thank you very much. I knew it was over a couple months ago. Joanie asked me to get my computer to her real quick. I said, well, I'm not done yet. She says, well, Kate Parks needed it. Hello, I'm still here. Don't have a computer, Kate's got the computer back. Yeah, there it is, Kate already has the computer. When I walked in tonight, I said to Joanie, what next for my final board meeting? Will my nameplate say Kate Parks? Joanie said, no, of course not, but don't worry, in an hour it will. Well, I've learned that when things bug me on the school board like this, I always go to a happier place when I hang out with kindergarten students. So I stopped by Sageville today to say hi to Jean McDonald, chat with some kindergartners to help reassure me that I truly haven't been forgotten yet. So I walked up to these playground kids, these kindergartners, I said, do you know who I am? And in unison, eight kindergartners said no, and one rough-around-the-edges five-year-old even said, hell, no. One quiet little girl, kind of silently sat off to the side. I said, hey, I'm the school board member who is the financial industry genius. And one kid, one kindergartner said to me, so are you Lisa Whitman or Mike Donaghy? So I thought, maybe I can intimidate them. I said, I'm the edgy, tough, gritty school board member. And another kid said, no, that's Tammy Ryan. Maybe I can try being super-nice to them, maybe that'll work. So I said, I'm the fun school board member who makes kids smile and laugh. They said, no, that's the french fry guy, that's Anderson Sancy. So I'd had about enough, so I played the seniority card. I said, look, look here, you little monsters, I'm the one who's been around the longest. And that rough-around-the-edges kid smirked up, kind of stood up and smirked and said, no, that's Jim Prohaska and Nancy Bradley. Finally, that quiet little girl off to the side came up to me and said, I know who you are. You're the one who, back in 2002, voted the wrong way on the school calendar, and then you flip-flopped at the next meeting. I said, yes, that's me, you'll remember. She said, you're the one who drives the superintendent crazy by complaining about stuff he can't control. I said, you got it, that's me. She said, you're the one whose attention span wears out at support services committee meetings after about 15 minutes, and you start saying inappropriate things. I said, right, yes, that's me, finally, someone who knows who I am. She said, of course, I know who you are, you're Tom Barton. And I said, so, obviously, you know who I am then. She said, of course, everybody knows who you are, you're Barb's husband. Now, I know, thanks, Ed. I'm really going to miss you.
We're on repeat right now.
Now, I know from 13 years, I do write this down, so I don't ramble on anymore. Now, I know from 13 years ago that when you leave office, you're pretty quickly forgotten. And that's really how it should be. It's not about one person, it's about the organization and the citizens. You don't get much done without the other six school board members and the superintendent. And I'm proud of a lot of things that we've been able to do together. And the early retirement incentive, sounds like a real simple thing, not very, not never going to be a headline stealer, but that, that has saved hundreds of jobs and millions of dollars to the district, thanks to Betty Hogan, Stan, Rick Colepitts, Phil, and now Amy. I'm proud of the relationship that we have with our teachers, and that's, a lot of that's in great thanks to Tammy and her group. We've had a difficult collective bargaining environment because of the changes at the state, we've been able to maintain good relationships with our teachers. I'm proud of our strategic plan, you know? When we, when we went back to work on that strategic plan, including, including George and Craig, we dug right in to get that thing where it should be. The facilities plan that we have, and Bill and Charlie's successes that they've contributed to the district, Bob White and Jim Brimmer, our, every one of our facilities is significantly better than it was 18 years ago. Technology advances, thanks to Kobe and his awesome team. Financial stability, Kevin and your team. Community confidence and communication, Mike, Syes, Taj, you folks have worked really hard at that. Emphasis on student activities while maintaining a tremendous focus on student achievement. Amy Hawkins brought us a long way, and now Joe, Shirley, Brenda, our leaders of leaders, Mark and Cindy. Two challenging superintendent searches we've been a part of, and Mike, when you talk about that search that we went through, that was a 40-hour work week for probably two or three weeks in addition to the regular jobs. But ultimately, out of that became Stan Rheingans, and very, very proud of everything Stan has accomplished. I'm really proud of the fact, you'll appreciate this, Ed, you got the, you got your recorder going? We have had fewer, we have fewer shorter but more impactful meetings at better times. So I, I think all of us would agree that every now and then, it's good to take a look at the meeting structures and make sure that we're being efficient there. A little shout out to Mike Brandon for some work there. So again, Ed, you have recaptured Monday Night Football. I thought it was cool a few years ago when we took 250 kids and staff to see Barry Manilow in concert in the middle of the summer, no cost to the district, paid for by Barry Manilow himself. That was pretty cool. But other than the Manilow Show, none of these things are necessarily attention-grabbers, but as Mike mentioned, proper process, planning, community engagement, and organizational structure are what really makes the ship sail. And it takes all seven board members and a great superintendent to get that done. One thing I am kind of proud of, I set a goal 18 years ago to respond to every single reach-out that I, actionable reach-out that I got from citizens, whether it was a voicemail, an email, a letter sent to me, you know, not including vendors, but from, from citizens. And barring any technological glitches, I think I managed to achieve that goal, especially from Tammy Dear and her crew when we did make that epic calendar debacle. And thank God, it was the early days of email, but I bet I got 50 emails over that, and I took my medicine and responded to every single one of those emails. I will not miss cold dinners on Monday nights. I will miss joking with the Pledge of Allegiance kids about how one kid dropped dead once from stage fright right in the middle of the pledge. I always go out there and razz them up a little bit, and they, they believe me for about five or 10 seconds, and then they, then they let it go. I will miss working with the best superintendent in the state and truly a great school board. The crazy thing is ironically, I had relationships with all seven of you away from the school board table. Nancy, I've known you for 30 years, going back to my teaching days. You've given your entire life to education, you've seen the district through some really, really tough times, and now you're sharing all your experiences for no pay and lots of demands. We had the crazy 90s in the Dubuque Community School District with all of our leadership turnover. You were one of the key people, along with 1,000 teachers, who held this thing together. I will truly miss you. Anderson, you were at the ribbon-cutting for the, for the opening of my office 10 years ago. You're a great ambassador for our schools, truly a competent decision-maker, you're not just a pretty face. Your kid Aiden cheats at Connect Four, we all know that, but that's a story...
I brought him here for you today, too.
Where's that, what?
He's back there waiting.
Oh, no.
He wants a rematch.
Well, I will, this time, he doesn't get to go first all the time. I will truly miss trading stories of growing up poor with you. I am convinced now, if I ever am poor again someday, I'll be much better equipped to, to kind of run loose in the neighborhood and manage to find a way to survive, because we have shared some epic stories about childhood. Lisa, your husband Gary was my son's cross-country coach, and I will always be indebted for what your family has done for Matt. I very much appreciate that. You have a big, big heart, always in the right place. You care as much as anyone, as anybody has ever seen in public office about people, and I think that's just an awesome thing that you bring to the board. Jim, I knew your daughter Katie back in the day at Wash, and you officiated many of my games when I was a coach. I always appreciated you letting me give you some immediate feedback on the decision-making. You are absolutely uncompromising in your value. He didn't even admit when he screwed up a football call, but you, you truly are uncompromising in your values, absolutely true north values. And you are a man of complete honor and integrity, and you are a quintessential kid person. I always appreciated you letting me give you some immediate feedback on your decision-making. You are absolutely uncompromising in your values, he didn't even admit when he screwed up a football call, but you truly are uncompromising in your values, absolutely true north values. And you are a man of complete honor and integrity, and you are a quintessential kid person. Tammy, high school, you were a year behind me, knew you from church, you are edgy, tough, and gritty, because you have high standards for this organization. You've provided exceptional leadership for all of us on this board, and our citizens are really lucky to have you. In fact, the entire community is lucky to have you, and you and your family are one of the most generous Dubuque families around for charitable giving, and not everybody knows that, but it is amazing what you and your family do for the community. Mike, we go way back to the Dubuque Chamber of Commerce days, you are clearly, and I don't even know that it's my opinion, I think a lot of people would say you are clearly the most influential community leader that Dubuque has had over the last decade-plus. I don't even want to know how many boards and commissions you sit on, because it would overwhelm me. And in the middle of that is elected office, with 70,000 bosses. In the Dubuque schools, all your organizations, they're just lucky to have you. You bring a wealth of talents to the district, you are a bargain that the taxpayer gets you to help lead this organization for free. Stan Rheingans, my proud Loris Duhok classmate, you are the guy who brings your two-mile tank to work with you every day. You gotta ask Stan about his two-mile tank, it was his ace up the sleeve when he was overseas about 18, 19, well, how long, well, no, about 28 years ago now. Yeah. You're the best superintendent in the state of Iowa, and probably beyond. And as long as you like your job, we might squeeze another decade out of you and Jen, so I hope you continue to be as happy as you are today. You've changed the course of the Dubuque schools with your natural demeanor and decision-making acumen, excellent executive team, and the trust you have in the community. You may be the most competent and well-respected government leader of any kind in the entire state of Iowa. In closing, stop the recording, Mike. Today, I'm really proud to say, you can take a flashlight and a magnifying glass into any corner of the Dubuque schools and be okay with what you see. We are void of personal and hidden agendas, our elected officials are honorable, our district leaders are honorable, our taxpayers are well-served and can be proud. We're a far cry from perfect, but we know that, and the district will continue in that direction. I've been a part of a lot of school board teams, and this group right here is about as good as it gets. Thank you to everyone for letting me be a part of making a difference. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, back to a little bit of business. I know, it's like we gotta come back to a little bit of business. Yes, please.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Joanie Lucas Board Secretary as the temporary chairperson.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Joanie Lucas Board Secretary as temporary chairperson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. This will adjourn the 2018-19 Board of Directors, and we will take a five-minute recess. The organizational meeting will come to order, and we will begin with roll call. Ms. Bradley?
Here.
Mr. Donahue?
Here.
Ms. Parks?
Here.
Mr. Prohaska?
Here.
Ms. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Sansi?
Here.
Ms. Whitman?
Here.
At this time, I would like to present the certificates of election to newly-elected board member Kate Parks, and re-elected board members Mike Donahue and Tammy Ryan, and Lisa Whitman. And now, if you would please stand and raise your right hand, I will administer the oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Director in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now accept nominations for the Office of Board President. A second to the nomination is not necessary.
I would like to nominate Tammy Ryan as Board President. Tammy's been representing us very well, and I would assume that I've not heard of any other members that want to come forward.
Okay, if there are no other nominations, I would entertain a motion to close the nominations and cast a unanimous ballot of Tammy Ryan as President. Would someone like to make that motion?
I move, I move that the Board of Education close the nomination and cast a unanimous ballot of Tammy Ryan as President.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the nominations be closed and a unanimous ballot of Tammy Ryan as President. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And now-
Congratulations. Good job.
Do you like to stand? Tammy, do you solemnly swear that you would support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I will now accept a nomination for Vice President.
I would nominate Anderson Sansi as Vice President.
I would like to nominate Jim Prohaska as Vice President.
Okay, let me go through my paperwork here. We have, I need someone to then make a motion, we have a nomination for Anderson Sansi and Jim Prohaska. So... They have been nominated for the Office of Vice President, is there any discussion? Excuse me.
Do you need a second for the Vice President?
No.
No.
Okay. All those who wish to cast a vote for Anderson Sansi, please signify by raising your hand.
You're not voting?
You're not voting?
Can we vote?
Yeah, you vote for yourself. And those who wish to cast a vote for Jim Prohaska, please signify by raising your hand. Okay. I need a motion, then, it looks like it was handed by Jim Prohaska.
I move the Board of Education close the nomination and cast a-
No, nope. I move that the Board of Education elect Jim Prohaska as Vice President.
Second. It has been, do we do, do we, can, do we do a full vote on this, Joanie? Okay. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education elect Jim Prohaska as Vice President. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
Could I just say of that, I think we had two outstanding people before us as candidates. Jim, I appreciate the longevity that you will bring as a continuing Vice President. Anderson, I know you would have done a superb job.
Thank you.
So, thanks to both of you for being willing to consider the position.
Now, I will do your oath of office. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, Iowa, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Congratulations, thank you.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Joanie Lucas as Secretary. Do we even have to vote?
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Joanie Lucas as Secretary. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education appoint Kevin Kelleher as Treasurer. Oh, I'm sorry.
We can do that same time.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Sorry, I was gonna just move right along. Ms. Lucas, would you come forward? Do you suffer, Lee, then? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Secretary in the Dubuque Community School District of Dubuque and Jackson Counties, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you, we appreciate your duties. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Iowa, and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the Office of Treasurer in the Dubuque Community School District, Dubuque and Jackson Counties, as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. All right, we are now on to new business.
I move that the Board of Education name the following financial institutions as depositories for district funds in the amount of $50 million each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Dupaco Community Credit Union, DoTrak Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, ISJIT, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, UMB Bank, US Bank.
Second. It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the following financial institutions as depositories for district funds in the amount of $50 million each. Collins Community Credit Union, Dubuque Bank and Trust, Dupaco Community Credit Union, DoTrak Community Credit Union, Fidelity Bank, ISJIT, Midwest One Bank, Premier Bank, UMB Bank, and US Bank. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move the Board of Education establish the regularly meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education establish the regular meeting of the Board of Education for the second Monday of each month at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum, and strategic plan meetings at the fourth Monday in October, February, and May at 5:30 p.m. at the Forum. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name the Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name the Telegraph Herald as the official publication of record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries.
I move that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Jurgens, and Sudmire, PC, as the official legal counsel of record.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that the Board of Education name Firsty Carew, Jurgens, and Sudmire, PC, as the official legal counsel of record. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Are there any other items to come before this meeting?
Sounds like that. I'd just like to congratulate the newly-elected board members, and welcome Kate to the board.
Thank you.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you.
There being nothing else, we are adjourned.